Is not a step by step process, but rather a trajectory that deviates from intended course and is only reset when one of when their appropriate support comes into contact with a recovering individual. It is too often the case that an inappropriate contact is made before the proper support can be found, which results in further addiction, further trauma, further marginalization, incarceration, and death. This outcome occurs to the extent that it does because there are far, far more opportunities for vulnerable individuals to come across destructive forces before they have had the opportunity to find restoration and hope. We could pretend that I what I have described is just the way life is, but we know, but that would be naive. Where we spend our money dictates the outcomes for so many vulnerable people within our community. Where you county board spend our money will dictate the continuation or the alleviation of suffering in many people's lives. I admonish you to heed what I'm about to tell you. Having served in combat while in the military, I have a set of benefits that have aided me in achieving the success I am now experiencing in life. Having been incarcerated after my service to this country, when I was released, I was immediately connected with a place to live, healthcare, mental health care, addiction therapy, and peer support. I was provided the opportunity for employment. Eventually, I was able to use my GI benefits to return to school at the University of Wisconsin. A while after graduating with my bachelor's degree, I used my VA home loan to buy the home that my two children, my wife, and I now live in. August fifteenth, I begin classes at Mitchell Hamlin School of Law. Ego would make me tell you that these things have all been achieved because of how unique I am. In reality, no amount of uniqueness or drive can overcome the absence of resources and support. I am where I am because the VA provided holistic resources a person needs to progress on through discipline and drive to extraordinary feats. I am here because we put our money into what we value and because of my veteran status, this country values me. I am asking that you now value me as a black man who has been incarcerated but has turned his life around. But furthermore, I ask that you listen to me and the others giving public comment. How many other black indigenous and other people of color and people from other marginalized communities are waiting for a chance to find their excellence? People who have survived and excelled past the hardships that oppression creates are the only ones who have the intuition and experience necessary to put this money to effective use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Was Nancy able to get on the line now? Nancy, are you on the line? If not, we'll move on to Pa Thao. Pa, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, County Board Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Pa Thao and I live at S eight six five one North Road. I am the Director of the Black and Black Women Power Coalition. And tonight I am speaking not only on behalf of the Black and Black Women Power Coalition, but also on behalf of myself and my small businesses. The offer demands simply ask that our local government prioritize incentive black indigenous people of color and vulnerable populations in the allocations and spending of the upper funds, which aligns with the county's commitment to BI-PAC leading the work as part of the racism in the public health crisis resolution. There are local governments that have approved a resolution against racism that are centering BI-PAC community. Boston, for example, plans to reallocate three million of the Boston Police Department's overtime budget towards public health to form a task force to review police youth afford policies and propose a transfer of nine million for the police towards housing and counseling initiatives. Minneapolis, which is our neighbor, plans to allocate funding towards staff and resources to address and repair the damages of systemic racism through actions like law enforcement reform. So, County Board have a real opportunity to matter how upper dollars could be spent to lift our most vulnerable populations and be a leader and be a powerful and proactive force for equity inclusion. You can start doing that by centering communities that are the most impacted by COVID-19 and who are the ones closest to to these solutions. They need to be given tools and opportunities to make significant differences in our community. Given the importance of the role of a committee such as the committee that you'll be voting on today, it is critical that BI-PAC individuals and leaders are included at the table to drive that work. One of the reasons for this committee as proposed in the resolution is to have a community-wide view on what our community need. The makeup of the committee as proposed would not ensure a community-wide view. So, I am supporting and the Black and Black Women Power Coalition is supporting all the other speakers who have asked that our county board postpone approving this resolution on the committee or to consider adding the following. So, one, that Dr. Briggs be appointed to the committee so that she is both on the county and the city's work group around upper dollars and allocation.
Thirty seconds.
Also ask that there are two members from organizations engaged in equity, diversity, and inclusion on this committee, along with a BI-PAC community member that has been impacted by COVID-19 and has lived experience to really to really determine where these dollars should go. As County Board Supervisors, you can play a key role in advancing social equity through policies and additional strategies, aim at closing gaps and improving outcomes of community. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration of my comments tonight.
Thank you. Nancy Oha, are you on the line now?
Nancy, are you on the line? I just unmuted one caller. I'll see if this is her.
Nancy, are you on the line?
Star six to unmute your phone.
Let's proceed, please. Do we have any other persons wishing to speak?
I didn't have anybody else on the list.
Is there anyone online who wishes to speak? Anyone online who wishes to speak? Last call. Anyone online wishing to speak? Samantha and Clerk McDonald, I think. Did we not have one or two written comments submitted which you sent to the board members? Did we?
Yes, we did, and those individuals have spoken except for Nancy. And so you do have that comment in front of you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to proceed now to item six, Reports to the County Board. Before we do that, I want to advise the board members of a slight change in the agenda, a change in position. Under item ten, Reports of Standing Committees and so on, we're going to take file thirty-three right at the beginning because thirty-three is conditional on thirty-four. So, I'm moving file thirty-three from the section on Committee on Finance and Budget to the beginning of item ten and prior to file twenty-five and then thirty-four. Okay. We're going to proceed to Oral Reports. First, the 2020 Audit Results from Brock Guyen from Clifton Larson Allen. Brock, are you online?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Well, good evening. I'm here to report on your 2020 audit, external audit, and you should have a handout. Looks like it's actually popping up here on the screen, so perfect. I'm going to walk you through some pretty high, high-level information this evening. That was Finance and Budget Committee earlier last week. Went over it in great detail, had a lot, a nice interaction with them, asked a lot of good questions. And so tonight, going to keep my comments pretty high level, but at your disposal. So, if any of you have questions, feel free to, you know, you can cut me off in the middle of it or stay them up till the end of the year, and that's fine as well. But hope to share some pretty favorable results from your 2020 audit here tonight. So, what we'll do here on this handout, if someone who's ever controlling that can scroll down and we'll go to the first page of here, what this page gives you is a summary of the reports we have issued in relation to your audit itself. So, the first one, your audit opinion, that's on the booklet. We're going to issue an unmodified opinion. That's what you strive to achieve. That means all the amounts and disclosures are materially correct, so that's, that's good news. The second section down there, we issue in relation to your federal and state single audit, it's another set of testing. We issue a report on internal controls. So, we do have two items in there this year to talk about. The first one is, is an ongoing activity for the, for the county. You're getting much closer. A lot of improvements been made here in limited segregation of duties. So, big picture what this means again. In certain transaction cycles that, in the finances, there's just not enough people involved or an individual has too many roles or responsibilities within the transaction cycle. So, you, you've been on a journey here for a couple of years of, of looking into each section and, and trying to find out ways to better segregate these responsibilities. So, you've made several improvements, currently looking into an internal audit function, I understand, too, and that would be really good. Certain things that make this a little bit challenging, one, it's very complicated, but you do have some evolving staff. So, as, as responsibilities change, as personnel changes, you have to adapt to that, make sure that in those gaps of time when, that, that you have good controls and segregation as responsibilities change hands from one person to the next. So, something to continue working on, and I would report that you have made some, some significant improvements over the last few years. So, getting much closer. The second one, adjusting journal entries. This one, I do want to clarify a little bit here. I almost feel bad putting this one in here because you guys have done such a great job. There's only two items. There's two entries, two, two adjustments to your books that we proposed at auditors, as auditors, and that's very unusual to have none or, or very few like that. Most of the counties I work with, we're doing upwards of forty or more journal entries. So, that should tell you, even though it's in here, that you guys have a very robust process of reviewing the numbers before it's handed over to auditors, and your team does a very nice job with that. And in, kind of in relation here, you don't have a third finding that you did have just a few years ago because your team there at the county, your finance team, you draft your own financial statement. Again, you're in very rare company there. I only have a couple of clients that do that. So, you're actually avoiding a third comment because you do that yourself. So, really, by and large, very good results here in your internal control report in spite of just, again, a couple of technical things to report there. So, hopefully those make sense. Item on Compliance, another separate report we issue and important to note here, the last sentence just says, "We did not identify any problems with your grants or contracts that we'd have to report in this, in this letter." So, that's good news as well. So, I'll move on then to the next page and talk about some of the numbers. So, on this particular page, it probably is a little hard to read on screen. I don't know if you have a version of this in your packets. Hopefully, if you can take a look at this. I've given you four years of data here. I'm not going to cover all these, but this, let's just focus in on your general fund here first. And if you focus on the bottom half, so I might have to scroll up just a hair there, the second to last row is called Change in Fund Balance. So, what that means is, excuse me, that's the results for the year. How did your general fund turn out? You had a positive result of three point five million for 2020. That's really good. You can see the trend there the last couple of years had been negative, so there's several factors that went into that. You received some additional revenues this year. Maybe you weren't anticipating like CARES Act money. The, the city of Eau Claire closed the TID district, which allowed some distribution to you, and expenses were better in line. Most notably, transfers out, and I'll get to this in a minute on the next page, but you didn't have that significant transfer to HHS like you have in the last several years. So, some good news there. If I look at the financial health of this fund and really reflective of the county itself, I'm going to look at three separate rows here, a little hard to find in here, I suppose, but a couple of rows up, you'll see something called Unassigned. It is bolded, but again, it's kind of tough to tell. Yep, that one right there. Thirteen point four million dollars. That's what we would consider your true reserves. We talk about this each year during this meeting. I'm going to compare that thirteen point four million to the total that you spend each year, your expenditures, which is a little bit below there, at thirty-four point eight million. So, when I take those two numbers and I compare those, I get that ratio at the bottom, if you can see it at the bottom of the screen, thirty-eight point four percent. This allows me then to compare that, how the trend is going from prior years, but I can also then compare you apples to apples to other counties. I know you operate with different programs and whatnot, but when you look at your reserves, very, very much a rule of thumb when it comes to reserves, you want to have a minimum, it's not a target, but a minimum of somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-three percent, or it's only three or four months worth of reserve. So, you're above that, that's good news. You have your own policy, which is you want, you're going to target through your budgeting process between twenty and thirty percent. So, that is your internal policy, you're above that, you're not necessarily within the range, but again, there's no consequence to being over or under, it's just a target for you to, to work towards. And if you, just to give you a little idea of how your neighbors come out, the average for our clients, and we work with over half the counties in the state, the average is about forty-eight percent last year. I don't have this 2020's numbers all summarized yet, but for nineteen, 2019, the average was about forty-eight percent. So, a little bit under that, but all in all, in a good shape there in the general fund and good things to talk about there. We'll move to the next page. Now, we're looking at a bunch of additional funds that are operated at the county. Now, I'm just giving you year-end reserves. There's no income or loss, it's not all the rest of your balance sheet, it's purely the ending reserves in these funds at the end of the year. So, in that top section, we'll talk about HHS here for a second. You'll do, you will see there's a negative two point three million. That's not the, again, that's not the loss, that is the end result of where you're at. So, it is deficit, but I think the good news here is, as we've talked about for a few years in a row, you've had very large losses in HHS the last few years. This year, while it was a loss, it was only, only, it was a hundred and seventy-two thousand. So, it was negative a bit. The budget for this fund is forty-two million dollars. So, if you look at it through that lens, it is pretty close to breaking even, even for the year with a slight decrease. What that two point three negative represents actually is, is the way your, your finance team in HHS is handling their reserves. So, they know of and expect some funding to come in in the fall, all right, to cover this deficit. So, it's a bit of a timing issue of when you can recognize revenue to cover this deficit for when your expenditures are being incurred, but it is going to be something to deal with going forward. You're probably going to be carrying this deficit of some level at the end of the year going forward. But if everything were to cease operations, you were to liquidate your, your cash receivables and pay all your bills, eventually you would get break even in this fund, in theory, based on the fall collections. But from an accounting standpoint, I can't recognize it in the books, so that's why you have, you're treating it this way. So, hopefully that makes sense. Good news here again is that the fund did much, much better than it has the last few years.
Brock, I might have misheard you. I understand the two, two point three, I mean, picked that up and you got to look at that separate as a fund. Did I hear you say that DHS ended the year a hundred and seventy-two thousand negative? Or was that positive, I thought?
It, it was negative. So, there's probably some early reports, this one was pretty close to breaking even. There was a transfer that, that HHS made back to the general fund, actually. In the last several years, the general fund had been supplementing money over earlier on before the books were completely finalized, there was a transfer made. I believe the amount was a hundred and thirty-three thousand. At that point, it was zero. It had breaks, broken even. But there was a later journal entry that hit this, this fund, had related to some additional expenditures, I believe, and that, that basically created the negative one hundred and seventy-two thousand. So, it was a late entry and one transaction, basically, that would have caused it to go negative.
Okay, that, isn't that different than what you told us at Budget and Finance? Or did I miss it?
Nope. This would have been the same number here as what we talked about at Budget and Finance, but I probably focused more in on where it, the ending fund balance and what the story was there.
Well, a hundred and seventy-two thousand is a far cry better than three million plus. Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I guess, this is Norb, if I could say a word?
Go ahead, Norb.
Yeah, I just put some perspective in it Supervisor Wilkie. I, I think there's a bridge that we could show at a future meeting because part of what is incorporated into what Brock's talking about is just the change in fund balance from just one period to another. He talked about a transfer to the general fund, so there was a positive transfer to the general fund. And so, there's a bridge that we've been working on that would show how DHS had a positive operational activity, and then there are some changes resulting from kind of just the accounting side, if you will. So, I, I would still say they, they had a positive year in terms of an operational surplus, but it, it's a little bit different when you look at it and just the, the pure financial numbers based on fund balance changes.
Thank you, Norb. Go ahead, Brock.
Sure. All right, on this, the next thing I'll talk about is item number three, Your Debt Service Fund, because you will see a pretty sharp drop there from three point nine million down to just under one million dollars. Again, this is your ending reserves. We talked about this for a few years now here, too, where you have this built up of funds available to you. So, you could apply those dollars for principal and interest at any point in a future budget, and that's indeed what happened here in 2020. You were, you built that into the budget. What that effectively allowed you to do is reallocate some levy elsewhere, too, to help out in other places. But, so you use some of those reserves, you paid principal and interest, and, let's see here, just to give you an idea of what went through here, there's quite a bit of activity. So, you did issue some new debt, it was refinancing debt. What you did is you took in some proceeds from some new debt and you paid off some older debt, and the benefit to you is some more favorable terms. So, you, you issued nine point two million and you paid a total, including that refinancing of just about, just under twenty-one million dollars of principal and interest. So, that's a lot of activity went through this fund, paid off quite a bit of debt, and your ending reserves there, just short of a million dollars is available to a future budget period. There is a story with your capital projects fund as well. So, here's another one. You see the negative trend there for the last three years, and then you ended up at a positive three point, just under three point six million here at the end of 2020. So, what's the, we've talked about for a few years here, you've had a bit of an issue with a prior year that dates back to about 2012 with a, a project that went over budget that you've been carrying this deficit for quite some time. It's been an unfunded deficit. So, again, this is another area that was tackled in 2020 and, and fixed. So, what you're able to do there is, is add some levy to this fund to pay off that deficit. You've issued some new debt, which you do on a regular basis for project expenditures, and part of that went and got transferred over to the highway fund, part of it was used within this fund here as well. So, just the net of all that activity, the additional risk resource to pay off the deficit plus the current year activity, what you're seeing now, that three point five is more of a true amount at that point in time of unspent debt proceeds. So, in the past, it was this deficit that had been funded, now you've got the, the three point five is actually reserves that are carrying forward into 2021 to pay for actual project costs. So, good news there as well. Turn the page. Got two more funds here, and what I typically try to point out is you want to change your mindset to more of a, it's a different basis of accounting, now we're talking full crew or business type accounting. And in doing so, what I do is I point you to the, the last row in each section. So, the first one to talk about, your highway department, in the middle of the page, you see a, a row called Operating Income or Loss, and that is three point two million dollars to the positive. So, again, good sign, reserves were increased this year. I mentioned just before, you did have a transfer in of five point three million, just under five point three million of debt proceeds from the capital projects fund. That builds into the story here as far as why you had positive results. You also had one, just under one point seven million dollars of levy that you apply here. It is important to note that it's about fifty thousand dollars less than the prior year, so you were able to apply less levy to your highway department. And you did have an individual larger unusual item, there's eight hundred dollars of a one-time easement received. So, some of those things helping the ending results here in this fund. If we look at the bottom of the page, we summarize your airport fund. And if you scroll down, you can get to the bottom of the page here, you're going to see a trend that shifted quite a bit. And if, if you think of your airport fund, typically, you're going to first think of, you're going to generate negatives each year. That's, that's what I would typically think in overtime, that's going to be true. The reason is, in the upper part of this table here, there's a thirty-eight million dollar asset that depreciates every year. So, each year, you're taking a one point seven million dollar depreciation hit as expense against your earnings. So, that's, that's, that's the nature of it. You've got this big infrastructure with the runway and the buildings and all that, all those assets, they depreciate over time. So, but you do have positives here, positive numbers, your total change in net position for the last two years, and how do you explain that? Well, 2019, you might remember, you had a eleven point million dollar capital contribution from the state. So, when they give you something, you know, part of your infrastructure, you take that on the books as an asset and revenue. So, that helped out that year, that was very unusual. And in 2020, also unusual, excuse me, unusual is you had a one point three million, million dollar COVID grant that was, that you were able to apply to operations. So, that's unexpected, it's not something you should count on going forward, for example, but that did help out the results for the year and why, a reason why you turned positive on operations. Let's turn to the last page. Cover your last set of funds here, your internal service funds, there's actually three that build up into these, each one of these total columns here that I'm giving you. You've got a risk management fund, a health insurance fund, and a shared services fund. So, what I'm looking at here is that, that change in, total change in net position right in the middle of the page, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's positive, another positive result for the year. But that tells me that, again, these are funds that serve internally, that it serves all the other funds in, in the county. So, if this, if you've seen positive numbers down there, that means your, the premiums you're charging for health insurance, for example, or the fees you're charging for the services, they're covering the cost, which is the goal here for these funds. Last but not least, on the bottom of the page, we summarize your long-term debt obligations. A few things to note, I guess, there's your general obligation bonds and notes, you can see how those were paid down a bit from last year. In spite of issuing new debt, you were still able to pay down your debt overall from eighty-six million down to eighty-four. I point this out because the trend is unusual. Right in the middle of the table, there's that WRS pension asset slash liability. So, you had two negative numbers and two positive numbers in alternating years. Those are very unusual situation, but they are accurate. It's, what that is, is you participate as an employer within the retirement system that Wisconsin administers. So, the state administers that they act, they hire actuaries to come up with evaluation of their plan. When you see a negative here, that means the plan is overfunded, it's, it's, it's in good shape. If it's a positive number, I know it's counterintuitive, but that's a liability, that's why it's shown on this table like that. And that plan has, has swung both ways in alternating years here. So, it is a bit unusual, it gives a little, a little bit of a headache when it comes to the accounting that you have to do in your enterprise funds, but that is the reality there, and that is affecting your financial results. So, I want to highlight that as just to explain why, anyway. So, the very last item I'll, I'll mention here is the last percentage. So, what is this? This is a, there's a statute that limits the amount of tax-supported debt you can hold at any given time, and you're at seventeen point one percent of that limit. So, certainly you have plenty of room, if you need it, for GO debt. I just, for counties, the average is more in between fifteen to twenty percent. So, it'd be pretty impractical, your mill rates would be really high if you were at about a hundred percent, but just know you're in a typical area there and you've got room should you need it. So, those were the extent of my comments that I were going to, that I was going to cover tonight, just in general, if I were to sum it up, some pretty good results, as I mentioned earlier, and try to open it up to some questions if, if somebody had some.
Questions, Supervisors?
Well, the report went very well, Brock. Apparently they weren't getting any questions. So, thank you for your report, Brock.
Yep, my pleasure.
The next item is 2022 Preliminary Budget from Norb Kirk. Director Kirk?
Yep, thank you Chair Smar. So, this evening, I'll be presenting a preliminary view of the 2022 budget. The intent of the presentation is really to provide all the supervisors with a baseline as we continue to have the joint committee meetings and budget reviews. So, Samantha, if you go to the next slide, please. So, a little bit about this slide, this first slide is really just highlighting some of the key elements that are included in this preliminary budget rollup, and in a couple of them, we're going to go into a little bit more, a little bit more depth. So, first of all, there's a cost of living increase is built in the budget, one point five percent as well as the, what has been historically the annual July step increase. Health insurance, at the time we issued the, the budget workbooks, we included an increase of fifteen percent. We came to that by looking at kind of our past history and what health insurance increase might have been last year if we hadn't had a not to exceed number and, and some of our medical loss ratios and other things. We're currently assessing our vendor RFP responses, so we had actually a fair amount of response from various health insurance vendors. We've narrowed it down to a couple, and we have interviews with, with those vendors coming up shortly. They provided their preliminary quotes as well. So, I'm happy to be able to say that I'm optimistic that I think our final increase in health insurance will probably be less than ten percent overall, so that will provide us a, a little bit of relief. I'd say that has a, has the potential to be anywhere from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand improvement from the numbers I will show you shortly. So, that, that's definitely a good place for us to be heading into kind of the next phase of, of the, the budget discussions. I've put in the net new construction number at two percent, that's about four hundred and seventy-five I put in the net new construction number at 2%, that's about $475,000. For a little context, in 2020, our net new construction was 2.3%. We were actually the fourth largest increase in net new construction percentage of the 72 counties. That could be a little bit, that could be a little bit conservative. But to put some perspective in it, for every 10th of a percent increase in net new construction above that 2%, that would give us about $24,000 additional levy. So even if it went up, you know, 0.3%, we would gain about roughly $75,000. So just to, just to have a little bit of context with, how much impact that might have. Probably one of the more interesting things in this budget is I, I did include in, in the initial preliminary budget, sales tax at 11.5 million. And I wanted to put, provide a little context for that. So in 2020, our total collections amounted to 10.98 million or roughly $11 million. And if you look back, even back in the last few years, in 2019, we collected 11.1 million. In 2018, it was a little bit over 11 million. So for the last three years, we've been essentially right around that $11 million mark. Currently through April collections, because sales tax legs and all that we have so far is through April collections, we're at $4.1 million. And that's off to a great start, a much stronger start than we've seen historically. So if I look at the historical data on collections over the last three years, if you will, from May to December, I would estimate that we're going to complete 2021 at somewhere between 11.5 and 11.8 million. Our current budget in 2021 is $10.5 million. So clearly, we all know that sales tax is a, is a very volatile number and difficult to predict. And many times we do kind of look at what we've seen kind of on historical rates. And so again, if I look at it on a historical basis, I'd say we're going to end probably higher than we have. And considering we've been running close to $11 million the last three years, I think finishing at somewhere about 11.5 million to 11.8 is certainly possible. The shared revenue is soon to be flat in 2021 at 2.6 million. Right now, I haven't seen anything that would suggest that number from the state is going to dramatically change one way or another. It's been relatively flat over the last few years. So I guess at this point, I haven't seen or heard or read anything that might suggest that would be dramatically different. And then lastly, I've got some preliminary placeholders for the levy requests for the health department and the communication center. I did that based on some preliminary numbers I received from, from the city in terms of what they were providing guidance for to departments. So we'll, we'll have to see as we go through those reviews. But there is a slight increase in these preliminary numbers for both the health department and communication center. So I could pause right there for a moment, if anyone has any questions on any of the preliminary elements?
Questions supervisors?
Okay.
Go ahead, Norv.
Okay, thank you. So then this page, I, just to put a kind of an overall overarching comment, I'd say, I think we're in much better shape at this point in the budget process than we have been in the last couple of years. You know, the, the overall levy shortfall that we're going to talk about is, is about $280,000 better than it was last year at this time when we were doing the 2021 budget. And at this point, I think we actually have, as I've talked about with health insurance, we actually have some, some likely upside that we'd be able to apply that would reduce some of that shortfall as we kind of work our way through. So, so this preliminary budget is, rollup is a little bit different view. What I was trying to do in this view is really kind of focus on the budget section summaries, rather than dive right into the departments. So tomorrow, on the budget website, we will post a version of this that has the departments listed under each section, section. So you'll be able to see, you know, what departments are covered under public safety or general government, et cetera. But for this presentation, I just really wanted to kind of set the higher level context for the board. And I think this chart does a number of things. One, it gives you a little context into where have we come from in terms of the, the funding requests, as well as kind of looking at what the impact of going from 21 to 22 is. As well as the last column just gives a general, you know, how many of the funding dollars, if you will, if you just look at the funding request, what's, what's the relative percentage split in terms of how many dollars are being spent on, you know, debt service or public safety, et cetera, from a funding perspective? So the top part is the funding requests that, that have been compiled based on all the department requests. And then the bottom section there, the general revenues are those, those things that we are reducing the overall request to get down to our, what's really the net levy request. And that's where you see the sales tax and the shared revenue, the property tax aid and some of the other things. So, so if you look at the 2022 column, you'll see that, you know, we're looking at a request of 57.4 million. So that's up about 6.8 million. You will see though, that the largest increase is in debt service, which you shouldn't be surprised and consider we've had a lot of activity in that area. And in particular, the borrowing for the, the highway building. You did see what Brock presented earlier, that we have been very good at paying down debt. So, and with the refinancing, I think, you know, we made a lot of improvement there. So that number is, has had some improvement already, just because of some of the refundings that we've done. So of that 6.8 million, you know, three and a half is related to debt service. That means, that means there's about 3.3 million that's related essentially to kind of departments. And I say departments and other things, you know, this includes community agencies. It includes a library, includes everything else that kind of is encompassed in what the funding requests are, that would be associated with levy only. So this is really a very levy centric kind of perspective. If you look at that request of 57.4 million in a general revenue that I think will come in about 14 and a half, that gets us to a, a net levy request of 42.8 million. That's relative to last year's request of 37.5. Again, a big increase of that is related to the debt service. If I look at where I think our estimated levy is going to be, and that's again, based on what we can include in the levy. So that includes, you know, debt service and includes the 2% net new construction, includes libraries, bridge aid, all the elements. That would be about 41.5 million, which leaves us with an estimated levy shortfall at this point in the process of 1.3 million. So that's a fairly large number. And again, to put some context, we were closer to 1.6 million last year at this time. Again, I think we could see potential improvement in that number, somewhere between, I would guess, 300 to 500,000 on health insurance, if we can get the final number below an increase of closer to maybe nine or 10%, which I'm, I'm fairly optimistic that we can do that. So if I take that into account, you know, we're probably looking at somewhere around a million dollars to maybe 800,000 roughly kind of shortfall that I wanted to make sure that everyone on the board understood that as we're heading into those joint committee meetings, because that's essentially kind of the number we have to keep in the back of our mind that when the administrator's budget comes out, it's, it's going to have to be balanced. And so, you know, sometime between now and when that, that, that administrator's recommended budget gets published, we're going to have to make up that difference. So as I mentioned, we'll post this, this data on the budget website tomorrow morning along with, you'll be able to see kind of the, you'll be able to see the departments under each of these sections that contribute to kind of these higher level numbers. So again, I, before I go on, I'll see if anyone has any questions?
Schneider with a question?
Supervisor Schneider.
The ARPA 20 million doesn't play into this at all, is that true?
Well, actually, yes, it, it will. And that's one of the things I'll talk about in a moment. So it, it hasn't played into it so far. You know, we've got a budget amendment that will be coming up where we're going to recognize the $10 million we received in 2021. And, you know, we're going to, there's going to be a budget amendment to talk about what to do with that. And then there will be another 10 million that we'll get next year. At this point, we don't have any of that built into the 2022 budget in terms of revenue or expenditure. So ultimately, it will have an impact. But at this point in the process, we have not put that in, into the, into the budget, preliminary budget.
Other questions?
Yeah, Chair, the supervisor Pagonis. Thank you. Norv, it's, would be helpful because the print is small, not all of us can see equally. It would be helpful if this had been distributed in advance, even for a cursory look. And I, I recognize it's all very preliminary and you state preliminary, but it would be helpful because these, the numbers are hard for me to see. With regard to the estimated levy available 41.5, I would suggest that you back out the library. And I would suggest that you back out, unless you have it there as part of the.
It's in, it's in the funding request, yeah. It is, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's already up there as well as the debt service. So I think I know where you're going there, Supervisor Pagonis, of trying to back out those things that are.
Right.
Exclusions, yeah.
Yeah, it, it gives us a false sense of where we really are. And then you're, you, you don't have a number for net new construction yet, correct?
I do not, that's why I had put in 2% as a placeholder. That preliminary net new construction number will come out the middle of August.
Okay, but 2% you recognize is pretty optimistic.
Um, I, I, I don't know, I think it, it could be, it could be potentially conservative, actually. I think there's been a lot of activity and, and so I, you know, I don't know. But again, the sensitivity to that, every 10th of a difference from 2% is about $24,000 of levy impact.
Right.
I, I would point out that this 1.3 million is a true levy shortfall because, because the expenditures are noted above with debt service and library and, and all the other elements. They're also taken into account in the available levy. So what's left there at that 1.3 million is a true levy shortfall.
Right, I get that, I understand that. Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Any other questions supervisors?
Supervisor Kronk with a question, if you can hear me?
Supervisor Kronk.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I tried to unmute earlier when we had the other update, you know, on our finances. And I'm curious, and I don't know if Norv can answer this, but with, in lieu of the public comment, with the 1.9 million received for COVID that was put towards operations, I'm wondering if somebody can give a general overview of how that was utilized for equity in our budget within the different departments? Since that seems to be a huge source of need and interest within our county. And I'm wondering if anybody can give some, some basic overview or detail of that 1.9 million and how that was utilized for operations to create equity, diversity, inclusion, and equity within our budget? Thank you.
A question, if Supervisor Kronk is referring to the CARES funding? Because CARES funding went to different departments. And for example, ADRC got some CARES funding. I know human services got some CARES funding that was applied to JDC. So there was different amounts of CARES funding. I don't know that we've ever actually compiled a summary of that. And Norv, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I've ever seen one.
No, we, you're correct, we haven't, we haven't compiled that in, in its totality, if you will. I can tell you that from a kind of general government perspective, if you will, we utilized about $600,000 of CARES funding. And that went for, you know, supplies, cleaning supplies, you know, personal protection supplies. It went to help to replace some of the extra wages and wages associated with the, the EOC operations and, and different things related to, you know, support of COVID in, in kind of a general fashion. So I, I can't speak to specifically some of the other fundings that were received that you mentioned. But yeah, we, we haven't done that, but we certainly could, could roll that up and do that and present it.
Chair Smire, if I may?
Who is that, please?
Catherine Schoff.
Oh, Administrator Schoff, go ahead.
Thank you. I think that specific to the CARES funding, the funding itself was very limited in actual use and it had to be used for direct expenses that were aligned with responding to the pandemic. And so as we look at that, the majority of the funds were actually transferred to our public health department and to our emergency operations to provide the on-the-ground response that we needed during the pandemic. And that response would have applied to all of the citizens within the county. But they also had a special unit within the emergency operations center that was specifically targeted to work with groups of persons who may have been more drastically affected. And so to the extent that they could, they worked with some of those populations. And I think that from an equity perspective, I think that the emergency operations center took that into consideration in its design. However, the money would have been spent only on very limited types of pandemic-related activities.
Thank you. A reminder that we're discussing the 2022 preliminary budget here. So I'd like to see us proceed it, Norv, but do you have more on this?
Yeah, I did, just a, yeah, a couple more slides. So just a couple of budget notes. Again, we are still assessing the potential budget impacts for the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds, as I mentioned earlier. So it certainly will become part of the budget. But at this point, it's really kind of too preliminary to determine exactly how we'll put that into the budget. My guess is, we'll probably see some of it probably materialize in the capital section. Some of the, how it'll be incorporated into the 2022 budget will be somewhat dependent on when we complete the lost revenue calculations that we're still working on. The amount that's associated with lost revenue has far more flexibility in terms of what we can potentially use it for. So the more that we get related to recovery of lost revenue, the greater flexibility we have on how that would work out in the budget as well. And again, the change in the health insurance rates, once we finalize those, we're going to look to incorporate those into the administrator's recommended budget, rather than forcing all the departments to go back and do a whole nother version. We'll work with the departments, determine what that is, and that'll be part of the administrator's recommended budget.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
I was just going to ask if there are further questions. Norv, does that conclude your report?
No, got one last page, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So, you know, what are the next steps? So the first and foremost, we're going to be doing these interviews with the health insurance vendors, working on that diligently to, to come up with a number that is going to show some improvement. Departments are continuing to meet with and review their budgets in the joint committee meetings. We've had a couple of those, but we have obviously quite a few more to go. The administrator and I have to meet with the city and go through the comm center and the health department budgets, like we typically do. We have two public input sessions that we're going to be holding, one's going to be in person and, and one's going to be via WebEx. We're still working on the dates, I think there's a tentative date for the in-person one of August 4th. But I don't think we've totally finalized on that, but just to put a kind of context of when that might occur. As we mentioned, we have to determine the budget impacts for the ARPA. We have to finalize the capital budget and that is, is been delayed somewhat because of ARPA. Because again, I think there are some things that we may be able to fund by ARPA or through ARPA, if you will. And so we're, we're kind of trying to assess all that and get through that before we finalize on the capital budget. And then of course, last but not least, there'll be the minister. And then of course, last but not least, there'll be, the Administrator will be delivering a recommended budget to the board. And we really, um, want to try to avoid, uh, printing versions of that budget if possible. But if, uh, you would like a printed version, we would ask for that, uh, and request and, um, and then we can do that, so.
I wouldn't say that's a bad idea. I think everyone should have a printed version of the recommended budget.
I'll take that recommendation into account.
Yeah. And with that, I'm done, Chair Smire. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Norb? I hear no requests. We'll move on now to the next item in oral reports. The redistricting update from Administrator Schaff.
Thank you, Chair Smire. I'll be very brief. The Committee on Administration at its next meeting will consider a very condensed timeline for the redistricting process. We do not anticipate having data from the census until September 1st and want to be, um, completed with the process so that by November 23rd, um, the clerk will have the information that she needs in order to finalize the process. And so WCA has done a lot of work on this on the front end, working with, um, the legislative, um, partners as well as the state. And with their timeline, we believe that talking to our local partners that we will be able to accomplish the redistricting during that time. It will be on the agenda for the next three Committee on Administration meetings. And you will also see regular updates and more information coming at upcoming board meetings, as well as we will be creating a redistricting page so that we will have our information available for the general public to look at in a just-in-time format. Uh, one other item, um, apart from redistricting, because it has become a question. Uh, Chair Smire, I believe, is working on communication that will go to the board, talking about in-person meetings. And we're currently anticipating a potential September 1st date to go back to live in-person meetings of the County Board and its committees. Thank you, Chair Smire.
Thank you. We will be consulting with our, um, Director of, uh, Public Health regarding that matter. Next item is under written reports. You have two written reports. The 2021 Contingency Fund on page four of your packet and the June 2021 Payments Over $10,000 on pages five to 11. Well, next move to first reading of ordinances by committees, beginning with Committee on Administration File 24. Clerk McDonald.
An ordinance to amend Section 2.04.010(c) of the Code, Rule 1, Meetings.
That item is on pages 12 to 13 of your packet. And that will come back to us in our next meeting for second reading. From the Committee on Judiciary and Law Enforcement, File 10.
An ordinance creating Section 9.85.030 of the County Code, forfeiture amending Section 1.50.020 of the Code, Schedule of Deposits.
Thank you. That item is pages 14 to 15 of your packet. And it will come back to us in our next meeting for second reading. From the Highway Committee, File 26.
An ordinance to create Section 12.34.600 of the Code, working in county highway right-of-way to create Section 12.34.700, bicycle and pedestrian routes on county highways.
That item is pages 16 to 17 of your packet. It will also come back to our next meeting, um, for second reading. Next is File 17 from the Highway Committee.
An ordinance to create Section 12.34.250 of the Code, Highway Setbacks, to amend Section 1.50.020 of the Code, Schedule of Deposits, to amend Section 1.50.030, Issuance of Citations.
That item is pages 18 to 21 of your packet. And it will come back to our next meeting for second reading. From the Committee on Finance and the Budget, File 28.
An ordinance to repeal Sections 4.09.040, 10.20.010a3 and Section 10.20.015 of the County Code, Vehicle Empoundment and Towing Charges.
That item is pages 22 to 23 of your packet. And it will also come back to our next meeting for second reading. Thank you. Next, under, uh, Section 10, Reports of Standing Committees, Committees, Commissions, and Boards under 2.04.160 and Second Reading of Ordinances. We'll begin with the, from the Committee on Administration, File 25. But we will follow that with File 33, which I mentioned earlier. So Clerk McDonald, File 25.
A resolution approving the plan to manage the American Rescue Plan Funds.
That item is pages 24 to 27 of your packet. The Chair looks for a motion.
That's a motion.
Backfield, so moves.
Supervisor Welkey, seconds.
That been moved. I, I heard a first second, but could discern the name. Who laid that first second?
Supervisor Welkey.
No, it wasn't Welkey. It was someone before Welkey.
I think it was Backfield.
Uh, Supervisor Backfield, are you seconded?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank, sorry for the confusion. Uh, explanation of Supervisor Bates backed up by Administrator Schaff. You're muted, Supervisor Bates.
Here we go. Uh, what you have in front of you is a, uh, chart, first of all, that indicates the order that would be used to be able to, uh, conduct this particular management plan. And then secondarily, there are a lot of, uh, responses to how they believe this can actually occur. And at this point, I'd like to turn this over to Administrator Schaff because I think that she has, uh, the detail in regard to this.
Thank you, Supervisor Bates. Um, the purpose of this resolution is to create a general structure for having, um, public conversations and a very open and public process in developing a framework for identifying how the funds, um, will be expended. One of the key areas that the Board has said that it wants to work is in the area of monies to our community, whether it be the not-for-profit community or the businesses and, um, others. And so what, uh, the, the plan does is it creates the ARPA Task Force. That task force, if you look at the, uh, graphic that is included with the draft resolution, would simply be, uh, putting together a third-party re-granting process that will allow the members of our community who have areas that they want to see monies invested in, come to the table and apply for the use of those funds through a lens of looking at all of the criteria for which we can expend those monies and all of the other lenses that would be applied to the process and equity lens and other lenses. And we'd have all of that in place. They would have that as part of that process so that money can be distributed throughout the county. We also looked to having the broadband committee participating. There's another resolution that you'll see this evening that talks about the work that they'll be doing to expand broadband. And then ultimately, the Committee on Administration will be making, uh, decisions with public input, uh, from, in the form of a survey that we have put out and other mechanisms that they will build into their process. This is a multi-year process. It will take many years to get through all of the work that we need to do. Um, the last point at which these funds can be, um, expended is in 2026, I believe, even though the decisions need to be made by 2024. So there's a great deal of time and effort that will go into this process. And this framework is designed to begin putting some parameters around that. It is likely an ongoing work in progress as well, and it is not done at this point. But this creates the initial process.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Schneider with a question?
Supervisor Schneider.
Uh, there was a good bit of public opinion about the members of the task force of the 11 that should be three of these and two of those kind of thing. Uh, in, uh, county officials, have those been named? Or those would be yet to be named? Because I saw some of the input was, it should be a specific person representing, uh, diversity. But have they, have the county officials been named?
Administrator Schaff?
Um, no, actually, the Board Chair is responsible for appointments. And so, um, the Board Chair will work to identify individuals, um, to meet each of those respective roles within the committee.
Supervisor Schneider, do you have a recommendation?
I was just wondering, so the Black and Brown Task Force had had said they wanted our shared EDI person that we share with the cities. They wanted that person on the committee. So that is, that is possible, the way this resolution is stated, that that could happen, right?
That's correct.
Yes, it, or it could be a member of the community. Um, I think that, uh, from where I'm sitting, looking at, uh, the, what we hope to achieve from this, we may want to look at a community member as being a part of that committee work.
Supervisor.
Or theoretically, it could be both, right? It could be EDI, community member and this public official.
Oh, there's no reason you couldn't have both.
Right. Within the number, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Other question or comment?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bates.
Thank you. What I was wondering about is when you make these recommendations to fill this task force, will that come back to the County Board for approval? Or when you make the, uh, fulfill the task force, is that a done deal at that point in time?
The resolution, uh, provides for the Chair to appoint. To answer your question.
Yeah, resolution says confirmed by the County Board.
Yes, true.
Supervisor Neiman with a question?
Supervisor Neiman, please.
Um, one of the main uses, uh, for this, um, money is identified by the federal government is, uh, to address, uh, public health, uh, response. In the list of, uh, members of this task force, uh, there is no one that, uh, represents the healthcare, um, communities. Um, it would be valuable to have someone that has, uh, public, uh, population health perspective regarding the pandemic response and recovery needs on this task force. Uh, so I would like to, uh, make an amendment that one member from either the, uh, Oakley County Health Department staff or the Board of Health, uh, to be named to the position on the committee.
We have an amendment proposed. Is there a second?
This is Supervisor Coffee. I would second that motion.
Supervisor Coffee, seconds. Thank you. Discussion and questions.
Supervisor Dunning.
Supervisor Dunning.
I was, I was going to do the same thing as far as Supervisor Neiman added. But I'd also like there, when you talked about the community member being part of the, uh, uh, the minority groups, there's nothing mentioned about a community member that I can see. And, uh, I think we should add another person from that specifically, make it a committee of 13, and add the, uh, the specific, uh, county, the shared person that's, uh, that's been suggested by several of the call-in people. So.
Well, Supervisor Dunning, we have two options here. One would be to amend the amendment, which you could do. And the other would be to hold on that, let us dispose of this amendment, and then you could propose your amendment. I leave that choice to you.
Uh, I guess, um, let's proceed with, uh, the amendment as it is.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
It did say one EDI member.
It does.
Chair Smire?
Uh, hold on, hold on Supervisor Hama Poil. Uh, was that the end of your comment, Administrator Schaff?
Um, yes, I just wanted to let the board members know that we did add, um, a member of, uh, let's see here, there's currently 11 members, and one of the members was from, a member from organizations engaged in diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Okay. Uh, Supervisor Hama Poil.
Thank you, Chair Smire. I just wanted to make a comment about, um, having someone from the Oakley School District on the committee, only because they serve a, uh, 11,000, 1,800 families or 1,7300 kids.
Point of order, I think we're discussing the amendment to add someone from the Board of Health. So I would suggest Supervisor Hama Poil to hold your request till after.
I'm only saying because they have.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, please. Supervisor Pagonis, your point of order is well taken. Um, Supervisor Hama Poil, I would say to you what I just said to Supervisor, uh, Dunning, that, uh, if you wish to make such a suggestion, it would be, I believe, at this point, a separate amendment. So other comments on the amendment as it has been proposed?
This is Coffee, and I have one other just thing that we think about as we choose possibly that Health Department person. And that is that this is also having to do with investments in water and sewer. And that Health Department person hopefully could have some background in, in those issues as well as, um, the issues of, um, health, public health emergencies.
Thank you. Other comments on, on the amendment as proposed, please?
Chair Smire, Supervisor Pagonis have a question. Is the, and I guess I'm directing it to Supervisor Neiman. Is the intent to replace one of the list with someone involved in health? Or is to increase the committee by one?
You're muted.
You're muted.
You're muted, Supervisor Neiman.
Uh, it's, uh, the intention is to add a member, uh, not to replace.
That would, I, I think what might be behind Supervisor Pagonis's comment is that that would make it 12 members. And it's quite common to have committees composed of an odd number. Is that correct, Supervisor Pagonis?
It appears as though, it appears as though there are going to be several additional, uh, motions. So I'm just thinking about the, the size of the, with the size of the committee could become.
Okay, thank you. Other comment or discussion regarding the amendment as proposed?
Could we hear it?
Yes.
Would you read, uh, Clerk McDonald, did you record that, that amendment?
I would ask that Supervisor Neiman, please repeat so I can get the wording down tight.
Thank you.
Uh, the amendment would be.
We were working with Supervisor Dunning's amendment.
No, that, we put that off the table, Supervisor Bates.
Thank you.
We're back to Supervisor Neiman.
Uh, the amendment that I propose is, uh, to add one member from the Oakley City County Health Department, uh, staff or, uh, the, uh, Board of Health to the named positions on the APRA Committee.
So right, I'm concerned. Clerk McDonald, do you have that?
That is ARPA.
Clerk McDonald, have you recorded that?
Okay, so an amendment to add a member from the Oakley City County Health Department Board of Health to the ARPA Committee.
Thank you.
No, it should be or. Either somebody from the Health Department staff.
Or, or the Board of Health.
Or a member from the Board of Health.
Thank you. We'll take that as a typo correction. Okay. Um, we'll now proceed to.
Supervisor Kronk with a clarifying question on the amendment.
Supervisor Kronk.
May I ask how many, um, members of the Health Department Board are from the Black, Brown, and Indigenous or other people of color, um, community members in, I, in our Health Department, just to clarify?
Uh, I'm not sure about, um, the number. Uh, I'm not sure about, um, the number from the health department staff. There is one, uh, person of color on the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to a vote on the amendment. You've heard the amendment. We will do this by a voice vote. All those in favor of the amendment as read and as proposed, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. I hear no nays, therefore it is a unanimous decision. Thank you. We are backed, that was the vote on the amendment. We are back to the main motion as amended.
This is Supervisor Dunning. I would like to, uh, I believe the Administrator Shaw clarified the possibility of someone of diversity and equity inclusion from one of those persons. But I guess I would like to go with this Hamburg, Supervisor Hamburg Boils and nominate and have, uh, a member of the school board add to that. That's my, please add a, a, one, the, a school board member. That'll make an uneven number, so.
So we have a, an amendment to add a member of the school board to the amended main motion. Uh, is there a second for that amendment?
I guess, uh, if, uh, if, uh, if there's, uh, maybe if it be clarified that it'd be a member of the school board or a school administration might be, uh, maybe that's an and/or also, or, or an or.
Well, I'm afraid you want to tell us what you're, are you telling us that that is what your amendment is?
Yes.
Or, thank you. Okay.
Is that any, is that any school board?
Um.
Because Fall Creek has a school board.
The largest of the counties.
Altona has one.
Yeah.
I think, uh, I'll go back to Supervisor Hambuk Boyle, who made that original comment. Was it your intention that it would be the ECASD?
That was my intention, but I understand that there are other school boards within our county.
Back to you Supervisor Dunning. This has not been seconded, so you can make changes.
Well, I think somebody from the school, uh, the school boards or administrations within the county should be on the board.
Okay.
I'll second that.
That was Supervisor Schneider seconding. Um, explanation, I guess. Uh, I'm sorry.
Can I comment? No.
Sure.
Uh, Supervisor Hambuk Boyle, go ahead.
I think that you could specify too that it would be someone connected to the, um, diversity, inclusion pieces within whatever board member or person that, you know, you asked to be on this committee, because that's happening in all the districts. I know it is in the Oakley School District.
I, I realize what your intent is, but procedurally, we can't make a change to the amendment once it has been seconded.
Yeah, that's okay.
Any, any, uh, common question regarding this amendment?
Supervisor Crunk.
Supervisor Crunk.
Thank you. Um, I, you know, I, while I appreciate the, the tweaking that's being done here of trying to add members from our community, I, um, and I am speaking to the amendment and then I will be speaking to the, the general, I, I feel like we could be doing this all night and with all due respect, and I honestly mean all due respect to everybody on this board and their backgrounds and their service. I feel like, and I don't want to assume everybody's, um, ethnicity, but I feel like as an all white or seemingly all white board, we could be tweaking this all night long. And we still don't have the input from our black, brown, indigenous and other people of color members in our community, which has been really the, the, um, scope of this money for people who have been most impacted. And data after data study after study shows. And so I feel like we could do this all night long. So after this is done, I will be making a motion to postpone. Um, but I do want to say I appreciate everybody's intention in trying to include, um, the broader member of broader members and, you know, um, boards and, and people that are invested in this community. But I feel like we could be doing this all night long. And the point is we have not had a public listening session, um, from people who have been most impacted. So I'll leave it at that and thank you.
Is there other comment or discussion regarding the amendment?
Uh, Supervisor Smire, I have a question. This is Supervisor Pagonis have a question.
Go ahead.
And I'm, I'm trying to make a distinction between one member from town government, one member from city or village government, and one member from a school board somewhere in the county. Are school boards considered part of the government? Are we talking about a different individual?
Uh, in my judgment, I think that the, uh, the, the statement about the school board members is specific to school boards. So I'm not sure how to respond to your question.
Okay, well, I'm, it's, it's kind of morphing together in my head, but that's fine. I'll just assume, I'll, I'll assume that given that we, you know, have Fairchild, Augusta, Fall Creek, Altona, Oakley, we have Pleasant Valley. We have all kinds of different, um, locations that, um, they could be distinguished. So.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Other comment or discussion regarding the amendment? I hear none. We'll now proceed to a vote. We'll do this by voice vote. Um, Super, I'm sorry, Clerk McDonald, would you read the amendment?
The second amendment, um, Supervisor Dunning proposed a second amendment to add a member of a school board or school administration in the county to the committee.
Thank you. All those in favor of the amendment as read out to you, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. We are back to the main motion as amended twice, actually. Is there further discussion of the main motion as twice amended?
This is Supervisor Crunk and I would like to make a motion to postpone until we have a public listening session at a length of at least two hours if needed with our community members as to who should be appointed for this committee. This is critically, critically important. And to be very honest, I don't even know what it means. I, I don't even know what I'm voting when I look at member from organizations engaged in diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, it seems to be in, in many ways sort of the hot words or buzzwords of the day. And so any organization in our community could say that they're involved in that, but unless we have the receipts or we see that outcome from their community, I don't know what that means.
Excuse me. Make your, make your motion and then we'll have a discussion.
I would make a motion, I would make.
Go ahead.
Pardon? I'm sorry, there's a delay. Okay, I would make a motion to postpone until we've had a community, um, listening session with a full county board. At least, uh, two hours in length if needed. We need to have a special meeting to engage people within our community and let people who are most impacted lead who should be sitting on this committee.
The proper, the proper motion is to postpone to a time definite.
I don't agree.
And, and so you'd have to state the, the time definite, uh, not a condition, but a time definite.
And, and I need to set a date?
Well, either, either a, either a date or a, for example, you could say by, by the next county board meeting or the, the second county board meeting from now or by August 30th, uh, but the motion is to postpone to a time definite. And the way it's been stated is just a bit vague.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, I would like to postpone to the first county board meeting in October.
Um, okay. The motion then, as I understand it, is to postpone action on the proposed amendment to the first county board meeting in October. Is that correct?
May I, may I, may I restate that? The county, to the, to the next county board meeting pending community input from our black, brown, indigenous and other people of color input. I mean, that's the point. It's not just to postpone. It's to postpone until we've actually had input as to who should serve on this commi, this committee. So it's really tied around a public listening session.
Chair Smire, this is Tim Sullivan. They would be postponing based on a condition to a date certain.
I'm sorry, say that again, Tim.
They would be postponing based on a condition not to a date certain.
Exactly my point. Thank you. So Supervisor.
If may I postpone with that condition?
No.
Based on a listening, oh, oh, I can't.
You have to postpone to a date certain to know when it's coming back, because if you don't do that, it goes, it is tabled and it is tabled indefinitely. And it will remain tabled unless someone votes to bring it back and then it's approved. Um, otherwise it will go, it will be tabled and die eventually.
Actually, the motion to table ultimately kills the motion.
Correct.
That's, that's why we don't use that. So Supervisor Crunk, again, uh, Court Counsel is advising you that in your motion, you'd have to provide a, a date definite.
Then the date would be before the final county board budget meeting.
Uh, that's not, that's a condition. That's not a date. I, I realize this is difficult for you.
Is that November? I, I don't know the date of when we're finalizing the county budget. Is that November? What is that date?
Administrator Shoff, I think, isn't that November 2nd? Is it November 2nd?
Yes, it is.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bates.
Thank you. Uh, one thing that's coming before the board is to consider a public hearing session on the county board meeting prior to our budget session. So that has to be taken into consideration as well.
That's correct. We, we will have a, a change of ordinance regarding public hearing on the budget. So that comment is not, not relevant to the amendment in front of us, but it's a reminder that we will have another public hearing. We will have a public hearing on the budget. So let's go back to the motion Supervisor, uh, Crunk.
I would, then I, I would stick with the November 6th date.
November 2nd, it would be.
The November 2nd date. Thank you.
Okay.
And Chair Smire, this is Tim Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Um, technically, uh, two motions are being proposed here. A motion to propose postpone is a motion that would stand on its own to a date certain. Um, and it's not really a debatable issue. Either it's approved or it's not approved. The hearing is a separate motion.
Uh, the, the hearing, that was just a comment, um, Court Counsel. So you're correct that this is a motion to postpone to a time definite. It is not a debatable motion. It does affect the main motion. That's its intent. So at this point, I'm calling for a vote.
Uh, need a second, Mr. Chairman.
Two seconds.
Thank you for, I'm sorry, I became lost in the middle of that. Thank you for reminding me Supervisor Wilkie. Uh, do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Dunne seconds. Thank you.
A point of clarification before we vote.
Yes.
Um, if, if, if we were to organize a public hearing in advance or things like that, and we were ready to move forward at a sooner date, could it be brought before November 2nd? Or would it have to be on November 2nd?
Well, Court Counsel, I believe it's correct to say it could be done before the, the specified date. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Once again, I'll try. Uh, we'll, we'll proceed to a vote on the motion.
Chair Smire?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, but I, I'm looking at my Roberts Rules of Orders chart and then according to it, the main motion postponed to a certain time is debatable, can be amended and passes by a majority vote. So we can debate this. We don't, we're, you know, it's not a, um, you know, we don't have to move to a vote. Is that, isn't that correct?
Court Counsel? Tim? Tim, are you there? Well.
Sorry, sorry, I was looking at Roberts Rules. They will, if you give me one second, I will get back to you.
Supervisor Crunk, if I may.
You certainly may. We're in the middle of it.
Thank you. The intention is not just to postpone to postpone. The intention is to have the input from the community that's been most impacted. And, and as we've heard from the public comments tonight, my intention is not just to push it out. My intention is to, to have that input. Yeah.
Anyone is making that assumption.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that's not the end result. So thank you.
You stated it clearly. Thank you. Tim, how are you doing?
I'm looking at the Roberts Rules, uh, cheat sheet, probably the same one that, uh, was otherwise looked at. And it does say to postpone consideration of something. It is an interruptible motion. A second is needed. It is debatable. Uh, it is also amendable and needs a majority vote.
Okay, so following Roberts Rules, thank you Supervisor Bowery, uh, is there any further discussion or question regarding the motion to postpone to a time definite?
Uh, Chair Smire, this is Supervisor Pagonis.
Supervisor Pagonis.
Thank you. I'm confused as to why we need to do this. The chair has the authority to, uh, make the appointments. Right now, we're at a committee of 13 people. Certainly, any one of us could, could, uh, provide input and information. Any member of the community could provide input and information. Supervisor Crunk could have individuals that she thinks would be competent to provide information to the chair. We can come back. We can delay this for three or four months. We're going to sit on this, on the, uh, funding that we've received and be unable to, to make any forward progress on this. And I'm hopeful that it's not going to affect the other resolutions that we have coming forward today. But isn't the point that the county board chair is going, is ultimately responsible for making the appointments? And any member of the community could submit to Chair Smire and say, you know, I think so-and-so would be a good member of the community. It would be a good member to be on this committee. And is, is it really the argument of three members from the county board, one member from a business community, one member from town government? Where it seems to me what's listed here is looking for a broad subset of people from different areas. And so it, it's still going to be the chair's decision and potentially by postponing until November, we're not going to have a committee up and running until January and making decisions until January. And is that something that makes sense right now?
So you're speaking against the motion?
I am speaking against the motion.
Thank you.
Because I, I think, Mr. Chair, it's, you're going to have the authority to make the final decisions anyway.
Thank you. Any other comment or discussion regarding the motion to postpone to a time definite?
This is Supervisor Dunning. I'm going to speak in favor of the motion because I think even what Supervisor Pagonis has said, the chair is capable of doing that. But he will have assistance and he can do it at, he can call it and still have it done in an advanced meeting. We don't have to wait till the first of November, uh, November. So there is, it falls into his, in his purview as to how soon he can get it done. So I'm still voting in favor of it.
You're voting in favor of the motion to postpone?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comment or discussion?
Supervisor Wilkie.
Supervisor Wilkie followed by Supervisor Jansen, I think. Yes.
I'm, I'm going to speak against the motion. I think we've all heard, uh, the input, particularly our chair. And that's what we pay him the big bucks for. Only kidding. We know you. But that's, that's a decision that the chair should make with all that input. And all 29 of us, 28 to the chair, uh, can, uh, make our recommendations, plus anybody in, in, in the, the public. Historically, the chair is also ran by administrative, uh, committee, uh, thoughts. And it is coming back before this board for its, uh, confirmation. Uh, so the, the. So the, the board will have another look at it if they feel that the chair has not fulfilled what they would like to, to see. So I'm going to oppose this motion. I think it's time we get at looking at how we can best utilize that money in our community, especially you heard a presentation from our finance director who is waiting to see what directions to go and what impact this may or may not have on the current budget we're working on. So waiting way into November is not a prudent decision. Trust, we got to trust our chair that he's listened to the public comment closely and gets good input and representation on that committee.
Thank you. Other comment or discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Jansen. I forgot that I.
No worries. And I, and I apologize. I'm working on a different device tonight, so I can't find my, raise my hand. Things are a little, little jolted. So I'm speaking in, in favor of this motion. I do share the concerns about making sure that we are moving forward with this because I do believe that quick distribution into our community is good. And that's why I asked for that point of clarification, if we could bring it forward earlier if we were ready. However, I do agree with the comments that we heard during our public comment period and the comments that, that Supervisor Cronk shared. Our BIPOC communities have been the communities that have been most greatly affected by the COVID pandemic. And I think having that input is invaluable. While there is, you know, a, a one member from organizations engaged in diversity, equity, and inclusion, that does not mean that that person is from the BIPOC community. That just means that they work for an organization that, you know, works in those areas. And so there's nothing in here that says that there will be any representation on this committee from the BIPOC community. And so because of that, I am going to vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment or discussion?
Yeah, Supervisor Anderson?
Supervisor Anderson.
Great. I would be speaking in favor of this motion. I see the concern of postponing it as it's postponing it and not that it's just postpone it, but that we won't gain something, the situation won't change. However, I see the intent of postponing in this situation is that the problem that we're seeing with the makeup of the committee is that our structure in developing that committee is flawed. And the tool that we have to fix that is an organized public presentation or a comment, the term doesn't matter. And that doing so will hopefully in some way change the perspective, the perspective of the, the method that we're using to choose this rather than just input. It's a attempt to hopefully shift and distort the, the structure that we're working with that has us make these decisions.
Thank you. Other comment or discussion?
Yes, Chair Smire.
I'm sorry, the first voice, who was that, please?
That's Supervisor Roberts. Yes, I, I'm, I'm also speaking in favor of postponement. Although I, I, I do, I would like to expedite things and get the financial aspects figured out. I don't feel that the BIPOC community or, you know, really any of the marginalized communities are going to be well represented with just this. And part of the reason why I'm saying that is because the oversight that has been brought up, you know, the vote that we, that we make on, on the, the folks that you appoint. We may not, we may or may not know those people. We don't know who they are. We don't know what their background is. We haven't had any, we don't receive any sort of background materials on those people. So I, I, I am going to vote for postponement.
Thank you. Other comment or discussion? I heard.
Snyder.
Prior to you, Supervisor Snyder. Supervisor Bowery, were you one of the people who spoke up a few moments ago?
No, I haven't spoke up yet. I guess this, I mean, for, in terms of.
Okay. I will go with Supervisor Snyder, followed by Supervisor Bowery. Supervisor Snyder.
I'm going to speak against the motion because it's my understanding that the hearing will be mainly BIPOC people inputs sought and that it's very definitely a community that has been affected by COVID. But I think that's too narrow. It's leaving out, for example, elderly specifically. The most deaths are among elderly because of COVID. I think we, if we're going to have a hearing to get input from those most affected, I think that would need to be more broadly defined. And I think that's what we have in the group listed now when they say EDI. I think that includes different communities of diversity. So I'm speaking against the motion.
Thank you. Supervisor Bowery.
Yes, I, I, I'm torn between, you know, two personal values. And on, on the one hand, I feel like that we, we shouldn't, we should be proceeding with deliberate speed, but for postponing the motion might have an impact in the area that I'm very concerned with, which is broadband expansion. And there are some other issues tonight that, I mean, other ordinances tonight that pick that up. I hate to see those postponed too. Because sometimes there's, you know, there's deadlines in, in terms of the grant world and in terms of broadband expansion. And I, I would like to go back to the main motion and why, why can't we designate, as some of our speakers suggested, that we add a couple of members from the BIPOC community, especially people who maybe have, have lost revenue and, and are citizens and, and have been impacted and have lived experience with, with the negative results of COVID-19.
Supervisor Bowery, we have to deal with the, with the motion in front of us now. Appreciate your comments and your reflection, but I'm going to ask you to confine it to the motion in front of us now. So were you speaking for or against?
No, I was speaking against because I, I feel like we need to, you know, we need to proceed with deliberate speed. We need to be careful in how we make decisions, but we do have a timeline and there are, you know, there's, there's one broadband grant, for example, that's due July 27th. I know that's not, you know, so if that gets postponed, then we can't support that effort.
Thank you. Supervisor.
Supervisor Neiman?
Excuse me, Supervisor Neiman, before you speak, Supervisor Russell, were you trying to be recognized?
No.
I'm sorry. I saw your little blue light come on there. Sorry. Supervisor Neiman.
Just a couple of comments. I think the main intention for postponement is to give underserved and under those that have not been able to participate to the greatest extent, a chance to be heard and have some input to the process. The other thing is that, yes, the elderly have been affected, but statistically, people of color have suffered disproportionately with the pandemic related to the numbers of people that exist. I'm, I am in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Other comment or discussion?
It was Supervisor Cronk that was trying to be recognized earlier, and I don't know if I have another opportunity to speak.
Well, really, we limited it to two times on a particular motion. But I would like to make sure that anyone else who wishes to present comment would do that before you would be recognized for a third time. Is there anyone else who wishes to present comment? Okay, without objection, Supervisor Cronk.
Thank you. And I recognize the comments and the input that have been made, both from people that support and people who are against. Historically, I, I, and while I, I have trust in our chair, historically, with our Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Social Justice Committee, that was a very internal process that occurred. The point is, and it was made via public comment, that this is a culture change. It's not that I want the funding or, or people that need it. I, I don't want any delays to happen, but I want to be very intentional. I want us to be extremely intentional about this process. And I think that's the goal of the public comments that we've heard, both via the county, the city. And, and I think we need more of it. I mean, we did not have that many speakers tonight. I think there were some issues with people being able to submit public comment with the technology. I couldn't pull up the full extent of the comments that were sent in. So I, I feel like while I, I don't want to slow any grant funding or matches or anything like that, I want us to be extremely, extremely intentional about how this process occurs and about who are the decision makers. And again, this goes back to the public comment about the resolution that we passed last year. Yes, it was not unanimous. You know, it, it was not necessarily attached to budget items, but I think when we want to say that we are very involved and very passionate about equity and diversity, inclusion, that has to be very attached to our budget items. And this is a huge sum of money. And even in the broadband resolution, I'll ask the same question. How is that attached? Or how are we ensuring that there is equity built into that resolution and those monies as well? So the goal is not just, again, to postpone, but hopefully to have a special meeting called with a very intentional process to engage people to say, who should really be the decision makers in our community at this table? Because that has not, if we're all honest, that has not traditionally and holistically occurred in all of our tables within the county. And that's an opportunity for us to embrace that and show actionable items to change. So thank you for allowing me to speak a third time.
Okay. Any other comment or discussion? The chair is calling for a roll call vote on this item because I have the sense that there may be a close division in the assembly. So Kurt McDonald, will you do the roll call?
The, just to clarify, so I have this correctly, this is, we're voting on a motion to postpone approving the plan until the November 2nd county board meeting?
That's correct. That's correct.
Supervisor Gibson?
No.
Supervisor McKinney?
Yes.
Knight?
No.
Pagonis?
No.
Anton?
Yes.
Zook?
No.
Maori?
You're muted.
Supervisor Maori?
You're still muted. It was a no.
Coffee?
No.
Henning?
No.
Bates?
A vote yes.
Russell?
No.
Gatlin?
No.
Smire?
No.
Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Duning?
Yes.
Wilkie?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Eckfield?
No.
Schneider?
No.
Leary?
No.
Deluca?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Cronk?
Yes.
And Kristofferson?
Yes. 14, 12.
12, 12, 4, and 14 against is the total.
The motion is defeated. We are, we are back, excuse me, we are back to the main motion as amended twice. And let's try to expedite this. Are there any comments on the main motion as amended twice? And the two amendments, we're adding members, just as a reminder. Any further comment?
Kristofferson.
Supervisor Cronk with amendment.
I heard Supervisor Kristofferson first.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add to the comments that have already been made. I do think it is imperative. And I also would like to have a clarifying question to include our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator, Janice Dr. Briggs as a part of this committee. As the committee is outlined here, would that person fit in one of those placements?
Was that a question or a motion?
No, that is a question.
Okay. I'm not sure who would answer that.
I asked that before and I thought you said yes.
Of course it does. A, a member from the government and, you know, a member who's employed. I mean, there's just all kinds of opportunities.
Supervisor Jansen, are you asking the chair if the chair would entertain that or permit that or appoint that person?
Um, I guess it's a, I was asking for a clarified question if that person would fit in one of those definitions. And if the answer is yes, I would like to make that recommendation for consideration.
Okay, the answer from the chair is yes, and I will accept your recommendation, as I would, by the way, accept recommendations from anyone on this board or any citizen in the county regarding the appointment. So the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor.
Supervisor Cronk with a motion?
Supervisor Cronk.
Thank you. Just with respect to the comments and with some of the language that's in this resolution in and of itself, I would like to make the addition that Dr. Briggs is an extra appointed member, not just one of the that are included. I think that's the problem that we've run into with some of our committees is that if we add, you know, perhaps one person, we feel like there's a checkbox that's been checked and that is not inclusive. I mean, that, that definitely does not represent our community. So I would like to assure that that is an additional amendment to the appointment. Aside from what's already listed in, in the resolution, and I've made comment that I don't understand exactly what it means to have somebody from a, a, a organization with a view on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think that's too broad.
Supervisor Cronk, excuse me, if you want to make a motion to amend, make that motion and then you can have the discussion afterwards rather than have a whole discussion and then have the motion. Let's have your motion.
I think that our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, Dr. Briggs, should be appointed to this committee. I don't think that should be left up to discretion or to take a certain spot. That's what we hired that person for. So I would make that motion that, that is an additional position added to this resolution.
So if I understand it correctly, your motion is that Dr. Briggs be added to the list of persons to be appointed?
Correct.
Yes, and I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair. This is Robin.
Supervisor Leary seconds. Okay, we have the motion to amend and we have a second discussion or comment. Supervisor Cronk, were you done with your comment?
On that, yes.
Okay, this is where you would provide your discussion. Okay.
So this would bring us to 14?
Yes. Other question, discussion? I hear none. I believe that we can do, I think we can do this by voice vote. So all those in favor of the appointment of Dr. Janice Briggs committee, I'm sorry, to the addition of her name to the committee members of the ARBA committee, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed by name? Those opposed by nay?
Nay.
Nay. I think I heard three nays. So I'm going to rule that the motion passes. We are now back to the main motion, as amended three times, by adding three members. Is there further discussion of the main motion? Okay, I hear none. All, I think we can do this by voice vote. All those in favor of the motion as amended three times, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay?
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay, and Clerk McDonald, how many total do we have voting here?
There's twenty-six people present, so one nay.
One nay, twenty-five aye, the motion passes. Okay, thank you. We will now move to, this is where we put file thirty-three, which comes out of the Committee on Finance and Budget. I've moved that up to this point in the agenda. So Clerk McDonald, will you do file thirty-three, please?
A resolution authorizing a 2021 budget amendment for approval of 2021 American Rescue Plan Act funds to Eau Claire County.
Okay, and thank you for the reminder of the agenda that this will require a two-thirds County Board vote, and I'm sure Supervisor Pagonis will help me with this, but it is because it involves a large amount of money. Is that correct? Supervisor Pagonis?
It's because it's a budget amendment.
Yes.
And I'll move the amendment.
I'm sorry, the motion is?
Yeah. I'm, Leary is.
Supervisor Bates, I moved, and Supervisor Leary seconds?
Yeah.
Did I do that correctly? Thank you. Okay, explanation. Supervisor Pagonis, I think backed up by Supervisor Maury.
All right. So what we have in front of us in this resolution is a two-part resolution. Part one is to accept the first half of the payment of the ARPA funds and to move it into our county budget. As you will see in the fact sheet, a special revenue fund has been established, it's Fund 201. And so all transactions that occur will be run through that specific revenue fund that we will be able to track it. So as you're well aware, there's going to be a little bit over twenty million dollars. The first ten million came in in May, and the second ten million, we anticipate next May. So that's part one of this resolution. Part two of the resolution is to take two-point-eight million dollars of the ten million and hand it over to, for broadband expansion. And I'm sure many of you have seen or looked at, we have very specific rules from the U.S. Department of Treasury as to how these funds would get utilized. And one of them is necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. And that comes out of the Department of Treasury interim final rule in terms of how ARPA funds should be used. So clearly, the broadband expansion is something that we've been pretty interested in completing. And so then the Broadband Committee could use this fund to start looking for matching grants and other uses of it. And with that, I'll hand it over to Supervisor Maury, so he can clarify the broadband piece of it.
Thank you, Stella, or Supervisor Pagonis, sorry. The Broadband Committee is, you know, has been working with other units of government, especially towns, to try and expand broadband in Eau Claire County. And all the towns got an allocation from ARPA as well. And towns don't really have municipal water or sewer. Everyone has private wells in Septic, and they're kind of limited in what they could spend it on, and that includes broadband. We have actually a proposal that has been sent to us from the town of Brunswick to apply for a grant that's due July twenty-seventh of this year. And they're allocating almost all, like ninety-three percent of their ARPA funds to expanding fiber to the premises in all of Brunswick Township. It'll complete that. And that's one thing that we've already done with Drummond. Those fibers, wires are being laid, the cables are being laid, and the splicing is being done. And by the end of the year, everyone in Drummond will have high-speed internet. So we've kind of set up a process by which we can work with the towns. We even have a checklist that was developed by Mark Zuber, the clerk at Drummond, to encourage towns to get engaged and to, you know, do surveys and to make sure that they're, they've put things in place to be able to be in position to apply for grants. There is going to be another round of funding from the Wisconsin PSC in late this year, and there is additional monies that the state has approved to be in that pot. So we want to be ready for that. And that would give us the opportunity not only to support the project in Drummond, because they didn't start construction until after the date for the ARPA, so we can help them actually, you know, reduce the burden on the taxpayers, because they actually went to the taxpayers and generated additional property taxes to pay for the broadband. So that, so.
Supervisor Maury?
Yeah.
Sorry. I was hoping that your comment would just simply be about the transfer of funds. You're really addressing the next file. And that's fine, it's okay, but I was hoping you would simply support the transfer of the funds. You're muted. You're muted. You're muted.
The two-point-eight would enable the Broadband Committee to match the town amount that they have gotten for ARPA from all thirteen towns in our county.
Thank you. Any comment or discussion regarding this motion? This is file thirty-three.
Schneider with a comment?
Supervisor Schneider?
I'd like to really thank you and your committee and the staff that have worked with you to get out front on this, because I think the rest of us may have no idea how much is needed, and I'm sure way more than twenty million is needed. But you've gotten very specific and gotten some good projects going and looked for good grants, and I commend you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Beckfield?
Supervisor Beckfield?
Don, I want to thank you for all your work on this, because I'll tell you what, you get out into the Netherlands out there and outside of Eau Claire. You talk to any of the farmers or the other people out there who had students trying to get internet to go to school. If anything out of this, we may have learned from COVID, is that our communications with our people of need out in the country have been underserved with the internet. And this is getting, I think this is just a beginning of a down payment. I'm not even sure there's anywhere near enough money, Don, to get it done. But I applaud you. I know a bunch of people that have contacted me in that world that said this is the right move. And again, thank you very much for your hard work. It's thankless, I know, and I appreciate it very much, and I speak in favor of it.
Well, thank you very much for your comment on file thirty-four. But we're going to come back to file thirty-three.
You're welcome.
So Chair Smire, Chair Smire, since this does.
Supervisor Pagonis, sorry?
Since this does need a two-thirds vote, you may wish to have a roll call just for verification.
Yes, yes. I'm hoping to move to the vote, actually. Is there any other comment on file thirty-three? Not the Broadband Committee as such? Any other comment? Okay, we're going to do this by a roll call vote, and we're looking for a two-thirds majority to approve. So super, I'm sorry, Clerk McDonald?
Supervisor Gibson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Pagonis?
Yes.
Anton?
Yes.
Zook?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Gatlin?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Beckfield? Schneider?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
DeLuca?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Crunk?
Yes.
Kristofferson?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Well, next move to file thirty-four. Clerk McDonald?
Resolution designating American Rescue Plan Act funds to be used by the Broadband Committee for the purpose of matching funds by local units of government for broadband expansion.
Motion.
Gatlin motion.
Supervisor Beckfield moves. I'll take the second from Supervisor Bates. Background Supervisor Bates?
Thank you. I think there's been adequate discussion to, to actually look at this in a very positive way. It simply means that we would be able to not only get these funds, but they may be used to leverage additional funds.
Supervisor Maury, do you have anything to add to your earlier comments?
I would just add, I'm sorry, I spoke ahead to thirty-four.
No, that's my fault, sorry.
But we are meeting as a committee on Friday, and if this passes, we'll be able to proceed with consideration of an application from the town of Brunswick, as I mentioned before. This minimum speed for the fiber to the premises for the all of Brunswick will be one hundred, one hundred, one hundred up, one hundred down, and up to one gigabyte available. And there are businesses out there, and there might be businesses that want to locate in rural areas that would be very interested in that. So it will serve all the remaining unserved and underserved and prohibitively expensive parts of Brunswick. There are some people that do get high-speed internet, but they can't afford it because it's very expensive through like cell phone hotspots and so on. And again, we have a model that we can proceed, and now we have two out of the thirteen towns covered, and we're marching forward. We may need more money. We may need to come back to the county for matching funds, but this gives us something that we can work with the towns with, and it may get a little more difficult. We might have to use different technologies such as the Starlink, but this gives us what we need to proceed and proceed in a quick manner, but a very deliberate one. We've been meeting since August of 2019, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will take into account your earlier comments, Supervisor Beckfield. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Others?
Yeah, Pagonis with just a quick comment.
Supervisor Pagonis?
Thank you. When this was discussed in the Committee on Finance, I expressed some concern about the definition of the word broadband. And we were, I was patiently explained to that broadband includes all forms of technology, not only laying wire. So for example, if the Starlink decides to expand, that that would be one method to, it would still fall within this. So when we look at broadband expansion, we're not looking at necessarily laying fiber.
That's so, only laying fiber. Yes.
And that's very true. In fact, if we had more competition in these rural areas, we might see lower prices for high-speed internet. It might benefit the consumer. So competition is good.
Thank you. Other comment or discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. We'll do this by voice vote. All those in favor of file thirty-four, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? It is unanimous. Thank you. We will now move on to Committee on Planning and Development, file eighteen.
An ordinance amending the nineteen eighty-two official zoning district boundary map for the town of Union.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Bates, second?
Dunning seconds.
Second by Dunning. Explanation Supervisor Gibson?
Yeah, this request was to rezone fifteen-point-four acres of land from A2 District to RH to divide the existing residence on two-point-two acres from the remainder of the property to be rezoned I-1, to be developed as a parking lot and access road for a new manufacturing facility for Menards. The county and the town of Union comprehensive plans, the future land use maps both include this property in the commercial industrial planning area. Planning Development staff finds that the proposed rezoning request substantially conforms with the Eau Claire County comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan recognizes that the proposed I-1 zoning district is consistent with the mapped future land use designation. The Union Town Board considered this rezoning on June eighth and recommended approval five-zero. The June twenty-second meeting for Planning Development regarding the proposed rezoning on a vote of five in favor and zero against, the committee recommends approval of the rezoning to the county board. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or discussion or questions? I hear none. We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of file eighteen, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next from the Committee on Finance and Budget, file twenty-seven.
Resolution authorizing the sale of tax-deed property to the city of Altoona for two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. Directing Corporation Council to prepare a quitclaim deed on the described property. Directing the county clerk to execute said quitclaim deed on behalf of Eau Claire County.
Motion.
Any moves?
Any moves? Second?
Gatlin second.
Second, not by Gatlin, thank you. Explanation Supervisor Pagonis?
Thank you. So both Resolution twenty-seven and the next one coming up, thirty-one, typically when a municipality asks for the return of parcel of property that's been taken on tax deed sale, we fulfill their request. And Clerk McDonald and I have a difference of opinion as to whether we're required to do that, but nonetheless, we typically do do it. So in the, so for both of them, just anticipate that. So what we have in front of us right now is a pretty useless parcel of property that's right up against the railroad, and it's undeveloped. The city of Altoona is going to be paying the delinquent taxes and the interest and penalties, so we essentially break out even. And so I just encourage your approval on this.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? I hear none. All those in favor of file twenty-seven, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next is file thirty-one.
Resolution authorizing the sale of tax-deed property to the city of Eau Claire for two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Directing Corporation Council to prepare a quitclaim deed on the described property. Directing the county clerk to execute said quitclaim deed on behalf of Eau Claire County.
Motion.
Pagonis moves.
Supervisor Pagonis moves, second?
Hamburg Boyle?
Second by Hamburg Boyle. Thank you. Well, this may be repetitive, but Supervisor Pagonis?
Thank you. It's sort of repetitive. It's also a vacant parcel. It's on a very steep incline. It's probably not buildable. The city of Eau Claire has requested to purchase it back. Again, they're paying the delinquent taxes and the penalties, and so we pretty much break out even. And again, I think we're required to do this, so I encourage your support.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I hear none. All those in favor of file thirty-one, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Yeah.
All those opposed by nay.
Who did that?
A simple aye would be fine. All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. Um, file thirty.
Resolution approving a budget transfer of twelve thousand dollars from Information Systems Capital Projects to Beaver Creek Reserve Capital Projects in twenty-twenty-one.
Motion.
Wilkie moves to approve.
Beckfield second.
Wilkie moves, Beckfield seconds. Uh, explanation Supervisor Pagonis.
Um, thank you. Um, this is the last thing up, so I'll try and be quick. Um, just by way of history, um, we have a, an annual allocation, at least for twenty-twenty-one, an annual allocation for capital to Beaver Creek of seventy-five thousand. Uh, by this point in the year, they have determined all of their capital projects and there's no additional funds, spare funds left. So when the Cedar Lodge got flooded as a result of a malfunction of a, of a, a water heater, um, it completely trashed the laminate floor. And so the, the estimated cost to replace the floor is ten thousand and the estimated cost to replace the water heater is an additional two thousand. So this transfer is being, um, made from unspent Information Systems Capital. So it's not like we're raiding Information Systems to pay this. This has been unspent, uh, unspent capital dollars. So, um, this needs a two-thirds vote, so I would ask for a roll call vote. And I also ask for, I hope you approve this because uh, uh, Cedar Lodge is unable to be used. I don't know, uh, Supervisor DeLuca was with me when we did the tour of the capital projects. I don't know if she has any contribution to make on this.
Supervisor DeLuca?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, I, I know that, you know, um, during COVID, um, certain, um, areas weren't being used as much. And so I don't think they were able to detect the problem quickly. And of course, uh, any water on laminate is disastrous. So they've chosen a different, more sturdy flooring now.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Supervisor Bates, I see your hand waving.
Thank you. I'm wondering whether or not there was any insurance claim issued on this.
I can answer that. Um, it turns out, it turns out that, um, the, the cost of replacing the floor, as I said, was about ten thousand. It turns out that the insurance deductible is ten thousand. And so we would have to be paying it one way or the other. And so I, I think the recommendation was that we would not make an insurance claim because we're pretty much breaking even. It would be for the two thousand for the, for the, uh, hot water heater.
Thank you for that explanation.
Any other question or comment? I hear none. All those in favor of.
We should have a.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Apologize. I was waiting for Supervisor Pagonis to jump on me there. Which is her duty. So, okay. Uh, Clerk McDonald.
Supervisor Gibson.
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Pagonis? Anton?
Yes.
Zook?
Yes.
Maury?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Gatlin?
Yes.
Smire?
Yes.
Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkie?
Yes.
Anderson? Anderson?
I heard a yes.
Beckfield?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
DeLuca?
Yes.
Danson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Crank?
Yes.
And Kristofferson?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to make a comment about the appointments to the ARPA committee. Uh, this is me begging for help from you. So I'm looking, well, I'm serious.
Sorry.
I'm looking, I'm looking for your recommendations plus any recommendations from persons or groups in the community. I really want to give a full consideration to all the things that you've mentioned tonight. I want to be sensitive to the, uh, to your recommendations and the committee, the community. Having said that, and having accomplished our purposes tonight and reaching the end of our agenda, I now declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
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 Night.